I would like to open the council meeting for Wednesday, August 8th of 2018. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands our nation under our government.
Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derrick Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from July 12th of 2018? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes are approved. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the workshop minutes from July 17th of 2018?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Those meeting minutes are approved. Earlier this evening, we had executive session pertaining to litigation and real estate The next order of business we will have is the appointment of entry-level police officers.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This is for Resolutions 18136 and 18137, the appointment of entry-level police officers. As you recall, back in July, at a council meeting, council approved Resolution 18-132, giving the chief the approval to assess the best-suited candidates on our current civil service list. The chief has assessed those ranking candidates and is recommending that Robert Nolan and Matthew Walsh be appointed as entry-level police officers. We're requesting the approval of Resolution 18136, appointing Robert Nolan as an entry-level police officer, and approval of Resolution 18-137, appointing Matthew Walsh as an entry-level police officer.
Thank you, Captain Clowder. Council, do we have any questions? Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve Resolution 18-136 and Resolution 18-137?
Turn room.
Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper.
Aye.
Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye. And Resolution 18-136 and Resolution 18-137 is passed and approved. And at this time, we will have Judge Lawrence come forward and the two officers.
I.
Robert Nolan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend.
That I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the municipality of Norristown.
The Charter of the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And of Norristown.
And of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a police officer for Norristown.
As a police officer for Norristown.
With honor.
With honor.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age, national origin.
Age, national origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability. Thank you, sir.
I.
Matthew Walsh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend.
That I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the municipality of Norristown.
Charter of the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And of Norristown.
And of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Norristown.
For Norristown.
With honor.
With honor.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age, national origin.
Age, national origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Thank you, Judge Lawrence. The next order of business we have is Keep Norristown Beautiful Certificate of the Presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. My name is Brandon Ford. I am the Special Assistant to the Municipal Administrator. And in addition to my duties under the Administrator, I am also the Executive Director of Keep Norristown Beautiful, which is, as you can tell, the first Keep America Beautiful affiliate in Montgomery County. Like I just said, we are the first local affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, which is a national nonprofit. And rather than me not do it justice, we have a video from them about exactly what they do. So this is what Keep America Beautiful is. Let's talk about America.
Not policies.
Not taxes.
Not tweets.
But how incredible our country is.
Left, right, up, down.
State lines to winding coastlines.
Urban, suburban, and rural.
We all deserve to live in a community that's clean, green, and thriving.
And we all share in the responsibility to create beauty that ripples from one neighborhood to another.
And one block to the next.
We are Keep America Beautiful.
The nonprofit empowering people like you to take action every day, at home, work, and in the community.
Learn more about Keep America Beautiful and how you can join in. Visit KAB.org. Together, we can do beautiful things.
Again, you know, the video's beautiful. It's perfect. And it came out about a week ago, so it's perfect timing, too. So, as the video explained, Keep America Beautiful is a national nonprofit that empowers its communities and its affiliates to help clean up their communities. So the question is, why should we be part of this group? Well, lots of benefits. We get national credibility. We get a national network of peers. I've already networked with my counterpart in the city of Philadelphia, as well as Bucks County. And just the ideas that they're throwing our way and things that we can adapt and use in our community has kept me quite busy, and they're just amazing so far. Again, training opportunities, tools, resources, and programs. We get bags, gloves, all the resources we need for picking up and organizing community cleanups for free, thanks to the national sponsors that Keep America Beautiful works with, including Home Depot, PennDOT, the various Departments of Transportation all across the country. They also provide specific grants that are only available to affiliates. And again, money comes from such companies such as Coca-Cola, Nestle, you know, some of the largest organizations in the country. But most importantly, it empowers us communities to fulfill a self-determination and making a difference in their town. As the map indicates, we are the 14th affiliate in the state of Pennsylvania, and we have the pleasure of being the first in Montgomery County. Montgomery County, now it's blue with a star. Last week, or, you know, a couple weeks ago, it was not blue. So since we became affiliate on July 12th, they've actually had to update this map to, you know, to show our represent on the map. So the group of my organization, our organization, Keep Norristown Beautiful, it's not just about cleanups and doing beautification. It's more about inspiring and empowering people to make a difference. And they can make a difference by reducing littering, improving recycling, and through beautification efforts. To reduce littering, one of the tools that we use is a community litter index. So I am assisted by an advisory group of very dedicated compassionate individuals that went out and we actually assessed 50 roadways in town. And we gave them scales from one being, you know, basically no or not a lot of litter to four being extremely littered. And it's very quantitative, so we have broke it down into five different target zones. Each target zone has about 10 locations that each were assessed. The goal of that assessment is, we have a base this year. Next year, we'll look at the same spots. We'll see whether they've improved or they haven't improved, based on our efforts, and so on and so on. Another tool we use are community cleanups and a tool share program. Our cleanup this past spring, we collected 1,980 pounds of trash in 132 bags using 88 volunteers. And again, we're very data-heavy in what we do. So we count up every volunteer, we count up every bag of trash that we collect, and, you know, thanks to the metrics provided by Keep America Beautiful, the average, national average for the value of a volunteer, of one volunteer for one hour of work, equals about $24.69. As of today, we have over 470 volunteer hours on books, which, you know, all added together, that's about $11,000 worth of work that we have done since we have become an affiliate. And doing a little bit more calculations, our cost benefit is $1.86. So for every dollar that we spend, we get $1.86 back. So within the first couple months of operating, we are almost doubling our investment. And just to emphasize, we are not tax-funded. Every dollar that goes to Keep Norristown Beautiful is thanks to recycling, thanks to the trash contract that the municipality has. The municipality is reimbursed through a recycling rewards program. So we get about $8 for every ton of recycling we collect. So the better job we do at recycling, the more funding we have to put into improving recycling. And this is just a comparison for just a residential trash collection in terms of recycling. I'm still waiting on the numbers for commercial, but just residential household alone, we've increased recycling efforts, you know, from about 1,500 in 2015 to over 2,000 as of last year. And our goal is to get that number even higher for 2018. And that last pillar is beautification efforts. And one of the projects that we have been working with is a partnership with the Audubon Center in Mill Grove. And we are repairing the buffer down at Riverfront Park. These pictures are from earlier today. So 1 o'clock, we were down there, and we planted over 100 native species at Riverfront Park, valued at over $1,200, half of which was through a grant from the William Penn Foundation, and the other half was from funds from Keep Norristown Beautiful. And part of that funding will also go towards putting an education sign up there, talking about the value of repairing buffers and what it means to be planting native species So we've accomplished a lot in the past couple months, but we're always looking into the future. So what's next? Thanks to council's direction, and I believe it was at the last meeting, we've gotten the go-ahead to pursue a sustainability certification that is sponsored by the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And essentially what that is, it's about a 20-page assessment where we will review all our operational practices, in terms of, you know, just standard everyday municipal operations, to healthy community, what we do to go out and promote healthiness in our residents, to energy use, conservation, green building practices, and exactly what we do to steward environmental issues in town. And the benefits for this program, in addition to, you know, again, national accreditation to our efforts, it really encourages innovation, going through the checklist of what they have and what they're looking at. I already have a list of things that we'll be pursuing and bringing before council to implement in town, in addition to potential cost savings, once we become certified, and that's a tiered program. So based on how well we do, we can get a gold, silver, bronze. We're not going to talk about bronze, we're silver or higher, I promise. There's also grant funding opportunities in terms of that, in addition to the appeal to residents and businesses and developers alike towards having that accreditation. Another project that we are proud of is, we are, again, working with the Audubon Center in Mill Grove, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, to host a Riverfront Festival next month down at Riverfront Park. There was a meeting today. Unfortunately, I had to miss it because we were planting plants, but we did have representatives there to organize everything. But we've already gotten just a wide range of support from, we will have kayaking down there for residents, free of charge, to go down on the river, watershed education booths, native species, we're going to talk about all the plants that we just planted down there, in addition to tentative beer garden from the Concha Hockin Brewery. But essentially, the whole sense of this event, again, and this is in partnership with the Chamber, is to bring people down to the riverfront, to showcase our Riverfront Park and make them aware of riverfront issues and environmental issues, and get them out down there and have a good time. And so with that, my contact information is there, and I encourage everyone to join us on our next cleanup, our next planting day. We're going to have another community cleanup this fall, which everyone is more than welcome to participate in. And, you know, just let's keep Norristown beautiful. And with that, I'm going to ask that council come down with the municipal administrator, and I'm going to present the certification that we got from Keep America Beautiful's national office, and, you know, we'll be able to bring it to Keep America Beautiful and show that we have the full support of council and all the residents in Norristown.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Brandon, I do have a question, though.
Yes.
Can you share some of the strategies maybe that Keep America Beautiful uses to educate the youth about the benefits of keeping our neighborhoods clean with, you know, trash and things like that? What type of educational strategies are they using?
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. They have a whole education wing. I have a whole binder full of education plans. And I actually talked to a couple of our friends at the Norristown Area School District, who were the volunteers for today. I forgot to mention that, and I do apologize. We had about 20 volunteers from the administrative staff from the Norristown Area School District actually conduct the planting today. So I did talk to them, and in addition to my counterpart, Michelle Feldman, from Keep Philadelphia Beautiful, she actually has implemented a whole volunteer education program, where a lot of retired teachers volunteer their time to go into different communities and different schools and talk about various conservation and litter education. So we do have a full binder of education plans, you know, fun activities, broken down by age range. So just the amount of work they have already done is just astounding and amazing. And that's also going to be in addition to workshops that we're going to plan in the near future for, you know, for adults, in terms of what they can do, in terms of how to build a rain barrel, you know, how to build a rain garden, you know, why is it important to recycle? We are going to be doing a two-pronged strategy in town. So we'll be targeting the schools and our rec program. I've already talked to our new rec manager about implementing a few different programs with her. And so we're going to target the schools, we're going to target the camps, and we're going to target workshops for the adults.
I also have a question.
Yes, Brandon, can you give us an idea as to how many times per year that you expect to have a cleanup? And then also, is there an opportunity for organizations or groups to call you to partner if they want to do something in particular in a certain area in Norristown? Would this group then be able to partner with outside groups?
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott Cooper. Absolutely. Keep America Beautiful only mandates that we do one event per category, so one litter-reduction event, one improved recycling event, and one beautification event per year, but I think that's setting the bar low. So my goal is to have one cleanup in the spring, one big cleanup in the fall, with various other educational and beautification projects sprinkled throughout the year. And in terms of groups doing their own cleanups, that's going to be essentially our goal. We do have a tool share program. We have over a dozen push brooms, rakes, trash grabbers, which is a technical term, where people can borrow them. We had one group with about 20 people from Redemption 1010, I believe, just come by my office and say, can we borrow your equipment? And I said, absolutely. And it just so happened to be a couple days before the 4th of July. So we had about 20 people go up and down Marshall Street, wearing Keep Norristown Beautiful t-shirts, just picking up trash. And we have had a couple groups since then borrow the equipment in and out. Anyone, any business, any group who wants to volunteer and schedule and clean up their own, more than welcome to contact me. I'll be happy to put them in terms of the resources and equipment they need.
Brandon, I don't actually have a question, I actually have a comment. Yesterday, just based off of National Night Out, I noticed that there were some organizations that were interested in Keep Norristown Beautiful. So one, I think, with those that have a vested interest in a community and showing pride, to want to keep Norristown clean is a great step and a great start. And also, it's a good way to foster relationships with everyone in the community. So I thank everyone and keep up the great work.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Next order of business we have is announcements, and Councilwoman Lewis will be doing announcements this evening. Thank you, Madam President. We have the Citizens Leadership Academy. The Fall 2018 Cohort is now accepting applications for the eight-week program. Participants will learn about local government, meet municipal staff and council in this interactive session. For more information, visit norristown.org or email Gabriella at Gprete, P-R-E-T-E, at norristown.org. The Elmwood Park Zoo Event, August 9th, Breakfast with the Bison. August 18th is the Country Fest with Station 92.5 X T U. Senator Dale and Leach's Kids Fair will be on Thursday, August 23rd. The Senator will be hosting his 10th Annual Kids Fair. The event will take place from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Elmwood Park Zoo, with fun activities and educational programs for all ages. They ask that attendees register at 610-768-4200. The Summer Concert Series, Sunday, August 12th, 7:00 PM, Whiskey Hickin Boys. Thursday, August 16th, at 7:00 PM, Pedro Villasenor. And Sunday, August 19th, 7:00 PM, Fab Forward. The Norristown Riverfront Festival will be on Saturday, September 15th, at Riverfront Park, from 2:00 to 6:00. There will be food games, kayaking on the river, and hopefully the beer garden. And then I added an event. CADCOM will be hosting Girl Code Program again, starting in September. You can contact myself, Heather Lewis, at hlewis@cadcom.org, or you can call 610-277-6363 extension 166. The Girl Code Program is free and open to girls ages 10 to 18. You don't have to necessarily be a Norristown resident. CADCOM services all of Montgomery County, and that program teaches young ladies STEM technology, coding, building their own apps, websites, and games. That's all the announcements. Does any other council members have any announcements? Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. The Montgomery County DA's office has recently, I guess they're using this national program, they're asking you to be a partner in their crime fighting by downloading an app called the Stop It App, S-T-O-P-I-T app, on your phone. You can download this from the App Store or Google Play, and input the access code MONTCOPA, and then you can anonymously text any kind of crime tips that you have directly to the Montgomery County DA's office.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
Yes, the Help a Single Parent Foundation will be sponsoring their annual Back to School Drive. It's going to be
The Girl Code Program is open to, free and open to girls ages 10 to 18. You don't have to necessarily be a Norristown resident. CADCOM services all of Montgomery County, and that program teaches young ladies STEM technology, coding, building their own apps, websites, and games. That's all the announcements.
Does any other council members have any announcements? Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. The Montgomery County DA's office has recently, I guess they're using this national program, they're asking you to be a partner in their crime fighting by downloading an app called the Stop It App, S-T-O-P-I-T app, on your phone. You can download this from the App Store or the Google Play, and input the access code Montco PA, and then you can anonymously text any kind of crime tips that you have directly to the Montgomery County DA's office.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
Yes, the Help a Single Parent Foundation will be sponsoring their annual Back to School Drive. It's going to be held on Sunday, August 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Oak Street Park in Norristown. For more information, or if you would like to donate, please either see myself, who's a board member, as well as President Saunders. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an announcement. The Norristown Lady Eagles will be hosting a three-on-three tournament, in addition with the Willis Brothers cookout, so if you don't have a team, you can definitely purchase some great barbecue, and the funds will go to the Norristown Lady Eagles basketball team, and that date is Saturday, August 18th, and it is at Simmons Park, and it begins at 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And there will be three different divisions, age groups 10 to 13, also ages 14 through 17, and then there will be 18 years in a league.
Councilman Jones?
Good evening. I just wanted to share that the Norristown Youth Eagles Football and Cheer Program has started as of Monday, August 6th. Norristown Youth Eagles serve students' grades kindergarten through sixth grade. They practice at the State Hospital football field between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. You can register your child by going on the website, www.norristownyouthegles.org.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. That concludes the announcements for this evening. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Al Johnson?
Good evening, Council, community, Crandall, Captain. I'm here primarily, and it's ironic that I come right behind the Keep America Beautiful, Keep Norristown Beautiful, with the, I came here in June, June 5th, council meeting, about the weeds, the grass, the overgrown shrubs in the 300 block of Penn Street. I've spoken to Crandall at the, what was that, Crandall, press conference you had down there at the park there on Markley Street, where you told me that that particular thing was about public parks and things of that nature, that $20,000 grant. I have not received a response. I came here last year to this council. In June, when I came down here, I gave each one of you one of these packets of the pictures of the overgrown weeds on the 300 block of Penn Street. You don't know what's back there, raccoons, possums, bodies, whatever. That's how awful it is. I don't want to come out of my front door and see this. I'm sure in your neighborhoods, you don't want to do that either. You told me about a clean and lean project. I've been in this town over 50 years, and I'm going to tell you right now, I'm getting a runaround. It's not my job, it's not my responsibility. Well, damn it, somebody got to step up to the plate. I pay taxes here. It's just a mess. It's a disgrace. I mean, when you come over to Dan Howard Bridge, you look to your left, you look down at the riverfront, oh, that's beautiful. When the Lafayette Street corridor is completed, people coming through Norristown, oh, that's beautiful. Keep Norristown beautiful, keep America beautiful. Start in your neighborhoods. Keep your neighborhoods beautiful. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace, and I'm holding each one of you responsible for it. You are the elected officials of this town, the council. It is your job, your responsibility to handle this. Me, if it was my property, I'd be getting fined out the wazoo. And this is really overcooking my grits, I can't take it no more. I jokingly, I said to Ty, I said, can I throw some kerosene on there and burn it down? That's how much of an eyesore this is. Keep Norristown beautiful. It don't look like it. It really don't look like it. The other thing I wanted to touch on was part of the capital improvement plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, before you proceed, what is the address that you're referring to?
Oh, God, let me see, it's got to be 338, well, I'll tell you what, if you come down to 300 block of Penn Street, it stands right out at you. Now, this gentleman right here to my left just told me he was the new code enforcement chairperson, whatever you want to call it. I'm hoping he can do something about this. You know, I mean, I keep harping and keep going back to keep Norristown beautiful, for people coming from the outside looking in, on your Lafayette corridor, on your different, up and down, it looks great, it looks beautiful, but you got to get into your neighborhoods. You got to get into your neighborhoods. The other thing I wanted to touch on, like I said, the capital improvement plan, that started back in June of 2017. I see on west end of Marshall Street, right before the railroad tracks, they did mill and blacktop that. I know it's not a question and answer period, but have they completed Phase One? My, back to Penn Street, it's like going over a bunch of cobblestone. With the capital improvement plan, I see that, well, I don't even know if this is part of the capital improvement plan, that you're starting to do some work, you just got a bid on Swede Street from Lafayette to Wood. My question, is that part of Phase One, Phase Two, or is that something altogether different when these other streets in the municipality also need to be done? I mean, I know that's the courthouse, that's Lawyer's Row, you understand? Neighborhoods, people, neighborhoods. The people that paid the taxes here, the people that voted you all in.
Mr. Johnson, if you could, please wrap up.
Yeah, I will, but you're going to hear me out, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Tommy, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Your street cleaning machines, I don't know if they're operable or not, but every Thursday, I move my car. Now, I know when you say, you know, vacate that part of the street, it's not only for street cleaning, it's for street maintenance, but the machine never comes up that block, never comes up that block. I'm ready to leave my car there and dare somebody to put a ticket on it. That's how frustrated I am with this municipality. Last, as far as the KAB, Keep America Beautiful, Keep Norristown Beautiful, believe me, I will send petitions to kab.org, I will send emails, I will send letters, to block your grants, and to do something about the sustainability certification. Your neighborhoods, people, you got to get up into your neighborhoods.
Mr. Johnson, and if you're available after the meeting, I'd like to speak to you. If you're available after the meeting, I would like to speak with you. Myself and Mr. Singh, who is the code enforcement director.
John Henderson?
Good evening, Council, Madam President, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, who I know. My name is John Henderson, and I'm a Montgomery County resident, done a lot of work in Norristown over the years, and I'm here partly because I made a mistake, I told one of my colleagues that I was pre-tired, and she immediately put me to work as a volunteer. So I'm representing a group called Expressive Path, which some of you are familiar with the group. It's a program that provides music, equipment, mentoring, lessons, and opportunities for kids in the arts, not just music, but also theatrical arts, and also visual arts. In fact, we had a program here in Borough Hall, probably back in March, where we had the building adorned with some of the artwork that the kids had performed. Most of the students are from the Norristown area, within the school district, in one of the many schools, or some of the other alternative programs that are out there for youth in Montgomery County that happen to be in close proximity to Norristown zip code. And if they're not from Norristown, they have found out about the program and the opportunities because they somehow were involved in either the court system or some program that put them in touch with this one service. And every year, we have several events, but there's a major event that we do at the band shell at the end of the Night Under the Stars, or Music Under the Stars program. Typically, that's September, one of the last programs that we do, is to have a festival for students to have their artwork on display, and also they perform. Many of you have probably been there, I know Hakeem, I've seen you there before, and it really brings the community together. I'm partly here as an advisory board member for the group, I volunteer my time there, but I also represent myself and a group of musicians who perform on behalf of the group. Typically, we perform and they raise money by our performances, and I have several people that work with Pamela Martin in that process. And I'm really here as a messenger on her behalf, she could not be here tonight because she's presenting at another forum, and I understand, I believe she's scheduled to be at a council meeting in the next couple of weeks where she's going to do a full presentation, and will be able to address almost a summary of everything we have going on for the several months left in this year, and also our progress we've had, great progress we've enjoyed so far. But tonight, particularly, she wanted me to find out on behalf of the group about possible waiver for some of the fees, and this is for the Elmwood Park event in September. Last year, the borough was kind enough to allow us to have vending there, there were several trucks there that sold food and things for people to enjoy, and the fee for that was waived. And so this year, knowing that the fee was waived, when Pamela and her group made outreach to some of the vendors, they asked them to contribute to the program in lieu of that fee, so basically, those vendors paid $50 to Expressive Path. And I should mention that all of the money, we're all volunteers, there's no, I don't believe there's one person on payroll with the group, but everything that the money's used for is for equipment, and for supplies, and whatever administrative things we may need, whether it's copying paper or printing and things. But those administrative fees that were charged to the vendors to be a part of this year's event were applied to that end. In fact, the vendors knew that that's where their proceeds, the money was going to go to the program, so they could actually see where that fee went. So I understand that there were some changes in the rules in terms of what allows vendors to be a part of such an event where they have to pay $50 or $60. So we didn't want, did not want to go back to our vendors and tell them there was an additional charge that we didn't tell them about when we first brought them on to be part of our fundraising machine. So what we'd like to know, if there's a process that we can get involved with before Pamela does her presentation, I believe it's on the 21st or 22nd, whatever day of the week that that meeting is on, if there's a process that she can go through to find out whether a waiver would be possible for that particular fee. Thank you.
Reach out to Pam. You're quite welcome.
That's it.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next order of business we have is Resolution 18-138 for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Good evening, Municipal Council. Before you is Resolution Number 18-138, consideration for adoption of the 2017 Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This mitigation plan was previously adopted by council in 2003, I'm sorry, 2007 and 2013. It's a county plan that has been put together by the Department of Public Safety, Montgomery County Planning Commission, with input from various stakeholder groups. The Hazard Mitigation Plan additionally has been approved by both PIMA, Pennsylvania Emergency Management, along with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Each municipality must formally adopt the plan in order to be eligible for hazard mitigation grants and funding programs coming from both the federal and the state government. I know part of the documents that went out was, I think it was like a 540-some-page document, so I'm sure yous all read right through that from start to finish, but that's it, Madam President.
Thank you, Chief O'Donnell. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to adopt the 2017 Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official mitigation plan for the municipality of Norristown? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, and that resolution is a pass.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Next order of business we have is Resolution 18-139 pertaining to disabled parking.
Yes, Madam President, this is Resolution 18-139 to establish disabled parking at 1409 Astro Street, 204 East Chestnut Street, and 610 Sandy Street. Officer LaFaye has done the necessary investigation into these locations, and we request approval from council to have disabled parking established at these locations, and the Public Works Department erect signs at the proper locations.
Thank you, Captain Clauser. Council, do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve Resolution 18-139, which would establish reserved handicapped parking spots at 1409 Astro Street, 204 East Chestnut Street, and 610 Sandy Street? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, and that resolution is passed and approved. At this time, we would like to open the agenda for a late item that we received. Will a member of council like to make a motion to open the agenda for the 2018 Road Program Milling and Paving Project? At this time, I would ask Mr. Jones if he could, please. Okay. All in favor? Any ayes? Hearing none, the ayes have it, so now the meeting is opened for the beginning of the milling and paving project.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have our municipal engineer here who's going to walk you through the process, but I think this is a good time also to respond to a couple of the questions that Mr. Johnson has, as this is relevant to our road, five-year rolling CIP road program. Yes, Phase One of the program was completed, and this is actually the beginning of Phase Two of the program. As council knows, I think it was probably two years back that the municipal engineer conducted an assessment of every segment of road in the municipality. We have a road master plan, which is the first ever road master plan for the municipality, which was vetted by the engineer, vetted by Public Works, and vetted by the council, and ultimately approved by the council. The first sets of roads that we are doing are the high priority roads, of which Swede Street falls next in that category, and so our municipal engineer will talk about the dimensions of that and the process involved in this project. So with that being said, I'll ask Cal Hassan, our municipal engineer, to come up and discuss the bid and the process related to this project, this phase of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Madam Chair, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this project before you. If you recall, back on the 23rd of July, we had opened the bids here at Borough Hall, roughly about 10 o'clock in the morning, to receive the bids for the mill and overlay project for the 2018 phase of the five-year road program that we had established, as Mr. Jones had mentioned about two, three years ago. We did receive a total of two bids. Please keep in mind, this- Uh, we did receive a total of two bids, uh, please keep in mind, this is a pretty large, uh, pretty large project. It entails, uh, milling and overlay, which is the blacktop, it also includes some curb and also sidewalk, which is part of the responsibility of property owners, residential's, ore, and, uh, commercial. Uh, we did receive a total of two bids, uh, the, the bidders were Glasgow, uh, out of Glenside, and also Makefield site contractors out of King Grupstein, Pennsylvania. Uh, the, uh, the low bid for this project came at one point seven million dollars and change, one point, one million seven hundred fifty-nine, uh, thousand and three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the second higher bidder was, uh, over two, uh, point two million dollars. Uh, the, uh, this is not all for the, uh, the responsibility portion of the municipality, which is the blacktop. Uh, this also includes, uh, almost, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of work to be, uh, paid for, uh, eventually by the property owners. This is for concrete and curb. Uh, so the project, uh, the limitation of the project is Swede Road, uh, was, as was mentioned earlier, and it goes from Lafayette, uh, to Wood. There are also two, uh, three other sections that are included in this, uh, project. One is on Anne Street between Barbados and Cherry. Uh, second is on Church between Marshall and Chestnut, and lastly, on Poplar from Astor to Markley. Uh, this is the complete, uh, limitation of the project. We had kept in mind, I would like to discuss with you in detail, that the administrator and myself, uh, we wanted to meet with the county because a section of this project includes the section on Swede Road between Penn and, and Erie Street. This is the section that is directly in front of one Montgomery Plaza and the courthouse. Knowing how busy the area is, and the municipality, uh, and the administrator wanted me to make sure I keep some very specific attention to this, uh, so that we do not impede on any activity or any daily business that the county conducts in that area. Uh, we had met with the CEO of the county and also the, uh, facilities manager, uh, discussed the project with them. Uh, I had suggested to them that as part of this project, we will complete the work, and I'll go into a little bit of detail why we, we wanted to do it this way. Uh, we will do the work in front of those two buildings on Saturdays and Sundays, and maybe when it's an off day. The reason being is, if you go on Swede Road right now, there are several sections of it, but I'll give you that section as an example, uh, you see the surface is moving. Uh, the, the reason for this is, as you know, I had approached Council a long time ago, and this is a process that I use on every single project that I design, I core test the road, so that I see a cross-section of exactly what's going on, so we don't go into it blindly and then get hit by, uh, unforeseen conditions, we try to avoid them before we get to them. That section has concrete at the bottom, there's a layer of bricks, and then there's blacktop. Uh, with that cross-section, you have no bonding, there's movement all the time with the heavy traffic, that's why you see the surface is, is moving. There's no bonding. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take that surface down to the concrete, establish it back up with blacktop, uh, and then just complete a, a normal cross-section. Uh, so that's why we would like to do that project on Saturday and Sunday, uh, and also on an off day. I don't foresee the whole section to take a long time, but we'd like to be safe. Uh, so we will start on that Saturdays and Sundays, but I am pretty sure we will start one Saturday, finish one Sunday late afternoon, the base will be ready, the county will resume their business, and then we'll come back and overlay it at the end when the whole project is done. We do have several of these sections, uh, but I assure you, this project will address these issues, and that's the whole intent, uh, of the five-year maintenance program is to identify the issues, address them properly, so that they fall back within the five-year program as they should. Uh, anything that is high priority now is gonna fall back to last, and then the next one will come up, and then so forth and so on. It's a, it's a circle that we will follow, and as always, we'll continue working closely with, uh, with the Public Works Director on this, and his staff, and of, of course, at the direction of the administration and, and Council. So this is pretty much what this whole project is. What you see tonight before you is in accordance with the, uh, Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Uh, if Council would like, uh, would like us to proceed accordingly, we're looking for, for the vote, which you, you gave us, so that we start the process, uh, for compliance for the next twelve days per the ordinance, so that at your next meeting, August twenty-first, we have the final word letter. That's when I verify hundred percent compliance with the Responsible Contractor, uh, Ordinance, uh, all of this, the, the bonds, uh, all the insurance requirements, uh, and other, uh, bid document requirements that they need to submit to satisfy the intent of the bid. Uh, so, that's, uh, that's, that's what I have to provide to you, I provide, I can answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Madam President, I also just wanted to add, and you all have seen this document, uh, and as we shared, this is the master plan for every segment of road in this town. It's been rated, it's been prioritized, it's the one the Council, uh, said grace over, and so we follow this, uh, according to the directions of Council, and it's certainly available for anybody from the public to come and look. It's got the street conditions, what priority it, uh, the street it is. Uh, the only thing is, we just follow the list according to the priorities and according to the funds that are available, uh, through the process of how we use our liquid fuels, uh, to do so. And, uh, again, it's, it's never been the way we've done business in terms of road work here, but it, and it, which allows us to do one point seven million dollar programs as opposed to the two and three hundred thousand dollar programs for, uh, one section at a time that we've been doing prior to Council approving this process. Uh, so, every road's done, it's done for a reason, and it's because of the condition of the road and, and at the approval, uh, the Council gave us to follow this plan.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Jones. Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. Um, one question regarding specifically the stormwater inlets and any other inlets or sewer grates that are installed in the street. As we begin to repair these streets, is it possible to consider bike-friendly stormwater inlets to be installed throughout the municipality as we go through, having to possibly replace them? Considering our proximity to the trail and the, um, future plans to possibly work on to make us a bike-friendly municipality, that might be something we want to consider.
Councilwoman Brady, this is an excellent, uh, comment, actually. We try to implement, and we will implement, the bicycle safe grates on all the inlets, starting with the ADA ramps, because that is in a more priority, and then we go out from there. Uh, that is the intent, there is a priority, and that is on our list. Uh, unfortunately, in a lot of cases, even if we didn't want to, we have to, because the old style of crossings, they used to put them at the angle of the, uh, of the ramp. Now, with the new regulations, you have to go on a ninety, so yeah, you have to shift it. But yes, absolutely, it is on the list, and we'll make sure to implement it, yes. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none at this time, then, I would like to see if there are any public comments in regards to this. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Would a member of Council like to make a motion to close the meeting to public comments? All in favor? Any nays? The ayes have it, and public comments are now closed. Would a member of Council like to make a motion to adopt the two thousand and eighteen program, Milling and Paving Program? And to issue a letter of intent? Thank you, Mr. Jones. All in favor? Any nays? Seeing none, the ayes have it. And that motion carries. Would a member of Council?
Madam President, before we adjourn, may I ask Mr. Singh to give us an explanation of the citation process, like the timeline, so when you issue a citation to, uh, or you get a complaint and you issue a citation, what's the timeline and process after that?
Thank you. Whenever a violation is observed at a property, for example, high weeds of grass, trash, animal waste, uh, the code enforcement inspector visits, visits the property after receiving the complaint, or if it's from our, uh, proactive inspections as they're driving throughout the town looking for these violations, once a violation is observed, they take a picture of that property, and they send a notice to the property owner, giving them seven days to clean up the property, and also a twenty-dollar ticket is issued at the same time. Now, generally, we're not out there on the eighth day to confirm if compliance has been met, because mail takes a little bit of time for the property owner to receive, so we give usually anywhere between three to five days of a courtesy grace period. After that time, if the violation has still not been corrected, a citation is issued, uh, to bring the property owner to the DJ's office. Uh, depending on how busy the DJ's office is and how many cases they have, we may or may not get a court hearing for anywhere between two to, two weeks to about a month, month and a half, uh, depending on the caseload. As far as the clean and leans are concerned, uh, there's different properties that we deal with, uh, Public Works, to have the Public Works staff clean, we have community service days that we use, uh, the county, uh, DA's office that, uh, community services being performed to clean up the neighborhoods, and then we also use our contractor to send out to properties to, uh, abate the issues. If I may comment on the, uh, particular property part of today, three thirty-eighth Penn Street, I actually had a meeting, uh, a discussion with Mr. Patrick Hitchens, uh, from Calcany Law Firm, to discuss about how we can take care of this property. Uh, the property is fenced, usually when there is a property that's fenced, we're able to just simply open the gate and have our contractor go there and abate the issue. Uh, in this particular property, it's, uh, chained and locked, and with that being said, on July twenty-fourth, I had a meeting with, um, Mr. Hitchens to discuss how we can move forward with sending out a contractor out. So we're gonna be obtaining, uh, administrative warrant to go, to be able to get permission to go onto this property to be able to abate the issue. Uh, so once that administrative process is completed, we definitely, definitely will be sending out, uh, the municipal contractor to go out there to take care of this issue. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Would a member of Council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? The ayes have it, meeting is adjourned.